The time is now 6:00 PM. Our regular city council meeting for February 9th, 2021 is now in session. It's my privilege today to lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Lord, we thank you for providing us another day of life. Thank you for your compassion each morning that brings the sunlight into our lives. Thank you for your grace each night which brings us peace as we sleep. Thank you for giving us patience as we conduct the business of our city. I don't know what's going to happen today, or how much will get done, but you know, and you will guide us through this meeting. Keep us safe at all times in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and duty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Before we get started, I do have that special announcement. Guests, staff, and council, while seated, it's perfectly fine to remove your mask, but as you approach the podium, we ask you put your mask back on as you depart the chamber. It's also my privilege to, I have a presentation, a proclamation, President George Washington Day. And may I please have Mr. Maria, Maria Witz to join me up here? Appreciate it. All right. City Assurts Proclamation, President George Washington's Day. Whereas the United States of America was established following the war of the revolution from 1776 to 1783, a war won through the brilliant and courageous leadership of George Washington, revered as the father of our nation. Whereas George Washington, who lived from 1732 to 1799, mobilized the Continental Army and led the American colonies against the most powerful country in the world, finally defeating the British at the famous Battle of Yorktown, Virginia. Whereas this revered founder of our nation resisted the efforts of many supporters to make him king or dictator, instead using his influence and power to support the creation and adoption of the Constitution of the United States. Whereas George Washington was elected the first president of the United States, serving two terms of office from 1789 to 1797, and through his devotion, wisdom, and vision became an example of distinguished leadership for all future presidents. Whereas William Hightower's chapter of Sun, of the Sons of the American Revolution, wished to encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of George Washington to our nation by celebrating his birthday on Monday, February 22nd, 2021. Now therefore I, Mayor Ralph Gutierrez, by virtue of my authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim, February 22nd, 2021, as President, George Washington's birthday, and call upon all citizens to recognize and honor the brilliance, the courage, and the vision of the father of our nation in today's complex world. And I want to thank you for coming in here and if you'd like to say a few words.
Well, I'm here on behalf of the William Hightower chapter of the Sons of American Revolution. I was asked to come today just to say a couple of things. Next Monday is a federal holiday. It's President's Day. President's Day used to be George Washington's Day. In 1879, it became the very first federal holiday. Because Washington, it is no exaggeration to say that without him, there is no America, period. He was often called the indispensable man throughout the revolution, also in the Constitutional Congress, and then again as president. Seems foreign to us today, but they had to coax him out of retirement multiple times to serve his country because he just wanted to be left alone. He did not seek power. There's a story I read recently, and I'll wrap up. Thomas Jefferson was Secretary of State, and Washington wanted to not run for reelection for president, and Jefferson implored him, "Run again because we're on fragile ground. We have states that don't trust this new government. States are threatening to secede." That was a thing even back then. And he said that the only way that people are going to stick together is if you run again because everyone trusts you and respects you. And so he was, again coerced again, to come to serve his country. And we owe him a debt of gratitude each and every day. Thank you. Also, I'd like to thank City of Shirts and Mayor Gutierrez for having us here.
Just a little bit about history about George Washington. From what I read is he never won a battle as a British officer. But it's amazing to know that between the day the Declaration of Independence was signed and the Battle of Yorktown, there was over 284 battles that were fought. He may not have won one as a British officer, but he won the most important battle there was and created this nation. Thank you.
Thank you for representing.
All right. We'll continue with city events and announcements, announcements of upcoming city events? Okay. Mr. James, yes.
I don't need to announce that Monday, the 15th, is President's Day and city offices will be closed. We just covered that. We'll note that Wednesday, February 17th, is the Breakfast with the Blue at Abel's Diner over at 17327 IH 35 North, Suite 200. I'll take my mask off. That's from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. Our next regular council meeting is Tuesday, February 23rd. And then from March 4th to May 6th, the Shirts Police Department is hosting the Shirts Citizens Police Academy. Classes are every Thursday from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Location is to be determined, given things with the pandemic and depending on how many folks we get. But you can certainly visit the Shirts Police Department or go to the city's website for more information.
Thank you, Mr. James. Announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Dr. Brown.
I have nothing this evening, Mayor.
Announcements and recognitions by the mayor, I have none. So we'll continue with the hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask before addressing the council. For the record, please state your name and address. All right, we'll go ahead and start off. Mayor Proton Whitaker, let's call the first one.
Leonard Moore.
Hi. Leonard Moore, 1653 North Santa Clara, Santa Clara, 78124. I mean, by now you all know why I'm here. I'll keep being here. I got asked recently, "Why do you keep going to these things when nobody else seems to? Maybe it's not such a big deal, and maybe you can stop going." And to those people, I would answer, "Because that is my privilege. It is my privilege to not have to walk in their shoes every day. It is my privilege to not worry when I get pulled over. Maybe that cop's going to shoot me for simply trying to walk away. It's my privilege to get mad when I get a speeding ticket and yell at the cop, and the cop gives me a ticket, but nothing happens. That's privilege, and it's not equal. We have a system that has systematically lessened the voice of some people over the voice of others. And until we can change that system and all of us are truly free and equal, none of us are. If I have to worry about my children growing up in a racist environment, because let's face it, racism is taught. It's not inherent. Nobody grows up thinking one person is better than another. They're taught that from their parents, their grandparents, and their great-grandparents. One of the biggest things I hear lately is, "Well, that's just how they were raised. That's how they were brought up, and we don't see a problem with that?" That is our privilege showing. It's my privilege to stand here, week after week, and talk to you on their behalf, even if no one else will. I told you from the gate, I'll be here, even if I'm the last voice in the room shouting for what's right, and I'll be here until you change things. You have the power to change things. You don't need me to tell you what to change. You know what needs changed. Your privilege is showing by not changing it. You all know what to do, and you're still not doing it. You ought to be ashamed, every single one of you.
All right. Mayor Proton Whitaker, please call the next person.
Yes, next we have Manny Moore.
All right. Can y'all hear me this time? Last time we had some difficulty with that. My name is Manny Moore, 1653 Santa Clara, North Santa Clara, Santa Clara, 78124. So I wanted to share a story with you guys. It's a personal story. And it kind of goes off of the privilege topic that was just covered. So I have partners that I work with every day, and I was sharing the story with them last week. It's been just over a year since I got my one and only ticket. I'm 33 years old, so that's quite a record, I have to say. But the thing is, when I got pulled over, I went into a little bit of a panic. I got, I started crying and got shaky, and the officer, instead of assuming that I was on drugs, asked if I was all right. And my husband was able to speak at the time, so he said, "She's fine. She's just got anxiety," which is true. But then the officer was also shining his light into my eyes, and I got a little angry about that, a little upset about that, and told him, "You need to shine it down. Shine it somewhere else." The thing is, the way that I was talking to the officer was probably not all right in the moment because I do have anxiety, and it was a little escalated and escalated the situation. But guess what? He didn't escalate that situation any further, even though I was outright upset, outright having an outburst. He simply took my information, went back to the car. He didn't tell me to step out of the car or anything. And my coworkers, they're like, "You realize that if you weren't white, that's not how that would have gone, right?" They're both Hispanic women, and I hadn't actually thought about it until I mentioned it. That's a personal story. It didn't happen here in the city, though. It happened in Garden Ridge. I don't know what their employment situation is there, but I was listening when I wasn't able to come here last week. Or, I'm sorry, it was the week before last. And I noticed that the head of the police department said that they're kind of hiring out of desperation. They have to put forth more and take whatever remainder they can get. Don't hire out of desperation, first of all. But if you have to, you have to have more training for these people. You have to have more ethics training for the officers that you are hiring, especially if they have a history. You have to have accountability for those who show a record here. And you all can meet with us, the police accountability activists. That would be a great start. And we can discuss that further, not this specific case, but accountability overall. I want to thank you all for your time.
All right. Mayor Proton Whitaker, please call our next.
Next, we have Jack Miller.
My name is Jack Miller. I live in Kirby, Texas, 4839 Dick Gordon. City Council Mayor, thank you for having me again. Just want to first give out a big shout out to Officer Finacy. I think that's how you say her name. Because on the night of the Rayford incident, she decided to pull that man over, and she did not see a violation. I've taken my film crew out. We've measured. We've put ourselves in the position of her sightline. And I can't tell if anybody's stopping at that red light or not. It's indisputable that when she made the decision to pull that car over, she had a hunch that he committed a crime. I don't know. I've looked at all your backgrounds, and you're extremely educated. You have an impeccable background. I don't know what you know about hunches and as they pertain to cops. Cops can't take action on hunches. They can't make arrests on hunches. A traffic stop isn't arrest. They can detain someone on a hunch, but they cannot arrest someone. Where I come from in law enforcement, with my law enforcement background, I always taught my trainees, "Don't put so much effort into hunches. Ask some questions, and let's move on to the next thing." Because hunches is going to get you in trouble, and it gets officers in trouble all the time. But nevertheless, I want to give a shout out to Finacy because without her, I wouldn't have made the money I've made so far off my YouTube streams and all that stuff. So far, I'm around $4,000. So I don't want her fired. I don't want Chavaria fired. I want him to stay here. I know you guys don't want him to do again, but I do. I want him to do it again. That's the devil in me. The angel in me doesn't want him to do it again, and that's why I keep coming here speaking. So far, I am still fighting the city. I just want you guys to know this. I think you're being transparent as possible. I think you're doing the right thing. I really do. But I'm still fighting the city on the release of the use of force policy. I'm fighting the city on the release of the general manual policy. I'm not asking for anything secret. The use of force policy, the TASER policy, and the general manual policy. And you guys are paying your Rampage Law Firm a lot of money to fight me on that. Anytime you want to meet, and I haven't got a card from you, Mayor. I'd like to have one. But anytime anybody would like to meet, and so I can give you an example of how much a city ends up paying to fight the release of information that we ultimately end up getting anyway, it costs Leon Valley to the, it costs Leon Valley to the tune of $250,000 over the course of two years, just in fees fighting us on the release of information. I'm not asking for anything secret, but I can understand why the city doesn't want to release that. And I say the city loosely. It's the police department that's not wanting to release it, but... it, but it's just, it's not in the spirit of transparency. It's a simple policy. I needed to ask, to answer some questions. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Proton Whitaker, please call the next speaker.
Sir, next we have Dana Eldridge.
Dana Eldridge, 2628 Gallant Fox Drive, Shirts, Texas, 78108. I'd like to address this, the first part, to Dr. Brown. I had the privilege last week of being a volunteer with a tremendous group of people giving out vaccines over here in the Civic Center, sir. Summer Long will probably be briefing here shortly, Chief Long, the whole group over there. The way that they treated folks going through the line, especially our elderly folks, top-notch, top-notch. Couldn't say anything more about them. So I got the privilege of working with a good group of people this week. The other, the other, the other thing is, is I have the privilege of standing up here, giving a correct address.
Please, that's our mistake, okay? Please, let's not interrupt them.
It's been adjusted. It's been adjusted. I was only gonna take three minutes anyway, okay? I gave my correct address, unlike some people here that have not given a correct address.
Please, please.
So I gave my correct address. It's hard for me to sit back and continually listen to our city being run down by people who are not from our city and still refuse to give their own correct address. So I, but I am, I do feel privileged that I was able to work as a volunteer in my city helping residents get the vaccine. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor. Mayor Proton, please call our next speaker.
Yes, next we have Marie Fleur.
Okay, I hate doing this kind of speaking thing, but...
Yes, you name an address, please.
Sorry, yeah, Marie Fleur, 9415 Hanover Cove, so I'm just right across the highway.
Thank you.
You know, it was really difficult for me to see y'all celebrating the George Washington Day thing and talking about, you know, the founding of this country, and then we're like saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're talking about liberty and justice for all. And it's just like, there's literally a family suffering right now, you know? And I see that, like other people said, "You've tried to be transparent, but we need you guys to take more accountability for what's happening here." That's all I have to say.
All right. Mayor Proton, any other speakers?
Yes, there is one more. It's Andrew Peralta, Perret, sorry. I'll let you pronounce it.
Can everyone hear me with my face covered? My name is Andrew Peretta. I'm a Shirts resident, 2920 Mineral Springs, and I yield my time to Pharaoh Clark.
Hello, Mayor Buteares and City Council. What I have to say before you is very short, and it's not gonna be antagonistic in any way. What I'm here today to say, you've all heard before, we already know what happened, and we know what needs to be done. What I'm here to advocate for and ask you is to stop wasting your own time and our time, to stop looking at this as an "us against them" situation, and to take some time to work together with the people that are here to come up with a reasonable solution. We all know, everybody that's seen that video, no matter which side you're on, we all know that there were things that were done in that video that could have been done better. We know that there were policy violations that happened in that video that need to be addressed. So instead of just sitting here every week or every other week, over and over and over, why not come together and work with the citizens and try to come up with solutions? Why not come together and release that, and release those policies and say, "What can we do to address these and make these better so that we don't have this situation again?" So what I'm here to advocate for you is that, instead of looking at this as an "us against them," work with people that want to work with you to make sure that this does not happen again. Here in Shirts, you have a very, very good opportunity right now to set the tone for the rest of the world how they should address this issue. You guys are small enough to seriously address this issue in your police department, and then to be able to measure the metrics and see how little changes can actually go in making a difference between community-police relationships. So what I'd like to leave with is just asking that, instead of looking at us as the enemies, to try to look at us as people that want to work with you to get changes that are needed, not only in this police department, but across our nation. We know that this is a serious issue, and we know that it's not going away, but instead of looking at each other as enemies, we need to come together and find a reasonable solution that we can all agree on. So that's what I'm here to ask for you all to consider today, and if you're open to it, I would love to be the person to help advocate with you and to help look at those policies and see where we can make changes. And I'm sure a lot of the other people here would like to help with that as well. So that's what I'd like to say before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Dennis, is there any hearing the residents submitting writing?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda items. Considered self-explanatory and information packets are provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no special discussion unless requested by council. Item number one, minutes. Consideration or action regarding the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of February 2nd, 2021. Item number two, Resolution Number 21R11. Consideration or action approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Shirts, Texas, authorizing the city manager to sign and execute development agreement extensions in relation to development agreements entered into November of 2010, April of 2011, and August of 2011. Item number three, boards and commissions and committee member resignations. Consideration or action approving the resignation of Mr. Will Soto and Ms. Debbie Kraus from the Historical Preservation Committee. Item number four, Resolution Number 21R02. Consideration or action approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Shirts, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Affinity Family Care Clinic for mobile integrated healthcare services. Council, do any of these items need to be removed for separate action? Yes, Councilmember Scott?
I'd like to ask for more discussion on number four, please.
Okay. Council, any others? Is there a motion to consider items one, two, and three?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilmember Hayward, was that correct? Okay, second by Councilmember Scott. Council, any other comments or questions? If not, let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 We have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. We'll go back to item number four as a discussion item. Resolution Number 21R02. Consideration or action approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Shirts, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Affinity Family Care Clinic for mobile integrated care, healthcare services. All right, Mr. Abbott, floor's yours. Well, I guess Councilmember Scott has a couple of questions there.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Guy Terrace. I would like, I did read it all, but I would like you to break it down for me if you'd be so kind. I don't feel like I had a comprehensive enough understanding of this, and if you can just like kind of recap it, and in your words, if you would.
Absolutely. I'm Jason Abbott, I'm the EMS director. So what we're trying to do is, last fall, we discovered a gap in some of the, actually, I'll kind of take it back on how we came up with the idea. My wife is doing clinicals, and she is actually with a nurse practitioner right now, and she was talking to me at home, and she was saying, "We're doing a lot of these telemedicine." And the problem with the telemedicine is what? They're not doing any hands-on blood pressure, pulse assessment, things like that. And I said, "You know what? This is a pretty good idea." So we reached out to Affinity Care and said, "Hey, is this something that you guys would be interested in doing? So we're gonna have our paramedics actually making house calls. It's our MIH paramedics making house calls. So we're gonna go ahead of a visit, we're gonna get blood pressure, we're gonna get pulse, whatever the doctor wants. We're gonna then give that to the doctor, and when they do their telemedicine, they're gonna have that right there with them."
Thank you so much. And that could not be better spoken, that just broke it all down for me. That really touched a nerve with me. Whenever my husband, he gets his care from the VA, and one time at the height of the pandemic, the nurse was on call, and I was, she was working remotely, and I kind of saw red, like, how do you take blood pressure remotely? How do you do that over the phone? How do you take someone's pulse, or look in their eyes, or assess them as a human being in need of healthcare? So that's fantastic. I kind of thought it was that, but not, I wasn't connecting the dots until you said that, Mr. Abbott. So thank you, and what a great idea. And if there's any more questions, I'd be happy to make the motion to pass that.
Mayor, is that appropriate?
Yes, it is. Okay, motion's been made by Councilmember Scott to approve Resolution Number 21R02. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All right, council, any other comments? Now, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
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 All right, we have seven ayes, no objection, motion passes. We'll move on to item number five, Resolution Number 21R05. A resolution by the City Council of the City of Shirts, Texas, approving the review and recommendations addressing the staff compression concerns and other matters in connection therewith.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight with an update on the compression issue that we have been dealing with for several months now, and I'm excited to bring a recommendation to you tonight. Hopefully, we can move this forward. Absolutely. Jessica Kurz, Director of Human Resources and Purchasing. So as we've, excuse me, as we've talked about this for some time now, I'm just gonna give a high-level overview of the compression issue. I'm gonna go into the pay plan proposals, the costs associated with those pay plans, and then ultimately what we're recommending tonight for council. Council charged staff with looking into the compression issue that exists, what we found exists within public safety departments, and so this happens when we have a subordinate making more than their superior. What we found was, we assembled a team, kind of dove into the issue with representatives from both public safety and non-public safety departments, and what we found was, this issue really exists because of the pay plan that was in place. It was a unified pay plan, so that means that all city employees existed within one. It had wide and overlapping pay bands, and so that created the issue where you might have a long-tenured corporal making more than a new sergeant. So that was really what we were looking to address. What we found was, it's been creating morale issues for some time, and really concerning what we found was, folks really weren't incentivized to promote, and so we want to encourage that career development. So tonight, here with a resolution to this compression issue, what we're gonna see tonight is a time and grade pay structure that we're recommending. And so with that time and grade pay structure, it's gonna have narrow pay bands with minimum overlap to effectively mitigate the compression issue. So what you see up there is small, it's a lot of numbers, but really, the picture that I'm trying to paint here is, just to give you some perspective of the model and the costs associated with the model, and how even small changes to the model can really significantly drive cost. The top you'll see is what we would call the initial proposal. This is what was developed with that working group. The middle is a model that would increase the max for a firefighter 2,000, and then the bottom model shows the costs that would be associated with having a pay band close to, or closer to, what we currently have. And so again, you can see from the initial proposal, a cost of, say, $175,000. If you look down at the bottom, you can see a model closer to what we have now would be $440,000. So again, it really, really drives cost. Same for PD and EMS. Again, what you'll find with these models is that they include step increases based on time and grade. So this is just a succinct cost summary. As you can see, option A, what we're calling initial proposal, the cost to implement this model for PD, fire, and EMS is gonna be about $464,000. You can see, quite unrealistic for us, right now would be something like option C, and again, that would be with the wider bands, over a million dollars to do something like that. So what you're gonna see here is what it would cost the city to implement this model now, say like this month. And in the second column there, February 21, down at the bottom, or I guess we start at the top and work down, you can see $364,000 is the dollars that we need to implement this model right now. Council was gracious enough to add $90,000 to the budget this fiscal year, so that money is there already to address this issue. What you see just down below that speaks to the merit change. One of the tenants associated with this pay model would be a change in how we pay merit. Currently, it's a permanent salary increase, and if moving to this model, what we would see is a lump-sum merit payout. So with that, there would be a change in the way we pay out merit, and that would yield an additional $105,000 that we could put back into this model. So down there highlighted, $164,000 is really what we need to implement now. We confirmed with finance, and as we had said previously, what we plan to do is take dollars that were already allocated in the budget for the class and comp adjustments and implementation, redirect those into this model. And so while we don't have the $164,000 today, what finance, we worked with them on a potential solution, is to use fund balance, because come October 2021, we will have about $178,000 that's already there in the budget, that again, was gonna be used for the class and comp, so we can quickly pay ourselves back. So we're just accelerating that about six months. So our recommendation here tonight is to adopt option A. As I mentioned, we would be looking to move with implementation immediately upon council approval. We would use that fund balance, but like I said, the cost recovery would be a very short turnaround, and of course, we would be revisiting all of this as part of a larger class and comp effort in, say, about three years or so. So next steps, like I said, propose implementation in February. We would be moving to inform employees of how this implementation would impact them, and again, we'd revisit class and comp in three years. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. All right, council, floor's open for discussion. Yes, Councilmember Davis?
Is there really a pressing need to implement this as of February 2021? You know, my concern is, we just did a class and comp study that affected virtually all the employees, and we have other discussion points that, you know, I understand the concern with the compression issue in public safety, where somebody who gets promoted, and they may be a patrolman and they make sergeant, that promotion level is not as much as a career patrolman, I guess, correct? As far as compression, we've got folks that are in a higher position, that are earning less than someone in a lower position, but that's typically because somebody gets promoted up, they may have been a five-year patrolman that gets promoted up, versus someone who's been a patrolman longer. You know, my concern is, after this last comp study, we had a whole bunch of other discussion points that I think we have to address, like the merit program, longevity, and things like that. And I just, I understand the compression issue, and I think it's something we have to address, but I think we need to talk about this in terms of the budget process going into the future years, and not necessarily just jump into a program right now, because we've identified yet another problem that we have to look at. And again, I do understand the issue of compression, but I'd rather look at the city compensation structure and figure out what to do... and figure out what to do right than to keep on putting a Band-Aid on our compensation program in the city every three or four or five, six months. Because, I mean, at the rate we're going, we're going to come back and have another discussion about the merit program. And then another discussion about the longevity program. And to me, it's one of these things where I think it's better to have a holistic look at the entire program and get it done with all the pieces and parts and not fix one part and then find out what we fixed is causing another problem with something else. So if you go back a slide or two. Go back one more. So like on this slide here, you know, we reference a 1% merit change. What is, what do we mean by the 1% merit change?
Currently, finance budgets generally 2% for the merit program across the city. And with this model, it includes a vehicle for folks to move through the pay band, right? It's the time and grade when they hit those milestones, then they would receive an increase in pay. And so with that, what we're doing is there would be less allocation for the merit. Currently, the city is, you know, relies on the merit program as it is today for folks.
So you're saying there's a less allocation for the merit program based on this?
Yes, sir.
But we have a merit program, this is my concern, we have a merit program that affects all of the city employees. And now we're saying we're going to have a less for the merit program, but it's implementing a pay change for public safety.
I'm sorry, sir, I should have clarified. This change would only apply to the public safety certified and sworn officers who would be placed in this model. None of the other city employees.
But fire and EMS as well?
Yes, sir, for PDs.
So we're changing the merit program as part of this compression for public safety, which means we have a separate merit program now that we're going to be implementing for Public Works and for the general employees. I get it, I just, like I said, I'm not a big fan of Band-Aiding programs and piecemealing it time by time. I think, I think this is a discussion that we need to have, looking at the overall process. But that's just my concern. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Scott.
I am so glad you said that. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Davis. We do appreciate our EMS, our police, and our fire department. It's not a question of that, it never has been. We, I want to back up a little. I was getting very emotional, and you calmed me down, you kind of talked me off the ledge. But I remember after the class and comp study, and it wasn't that long ago, we had one, and we were 45% less than what the market bears. And lo and behold, four or five years later, well, we're still 45%, you know, less than the market bears. And we just implemented new raises over $2 million. Yes, it might be 1.4 net, but we have to pay all those retirements and all the other benefits going forward. Somebody, please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. Because I have no problem, I leave my ego at the door, and I can't remember everything because we just deal so much in this. So I was all proud of us, patting ourselves on the back. Personally, I never want to defund the police. Personally, I am so glad, and EMS, I want y'all in this, I want y'all feeling the love and fire and all that. And I have been so thrilled that we were able to give raises. When the rest of the country, they're doing some weird stuff out there, I don't want to go into what they're doing. But I pity the person who's a social worker who has to go on a domestic problem. That's going to be bad news, and y'all are worthy, you are. I was very proud to be able to give y'all raises. But the same week, we got a very, I don't, I want to take the emotion out of it. We got a rather interesting email that was just tearing apart the class and comp study, every way it could. And I used to be a research director, I could tear it apart. And yes, it had flaws, yes, it had big flaws in it. That was not the point. The point was that I felt rather offended after we gave what I felt a generous raise to see the chief of police up here, and I thought we were going to get an attaboy, and we'd get all these problems with this compression, and I was stunned. It was just bad timing, okay? I think this is something I'm very interested in addressing next year, not right now. People are out of work, they've lost their jobs in the private sector, they're sure not getting raises. And I feel like we're at Santa Claus at the citizens' expense. But with that said, I want to keep y'all happy, I want to keep you close, I get all that. I didn't understand until Councilmember Davis said this was in addition to, and that was actually one of my questions. Because when James was up here showing us the future salaries, like the 1% is just going to be a thing now of the CC, the class comp study? I didn't know this was in addition to, and I was going to ask you about that.
Yes, ma'am. The Employment Condition Index that James was talking about is something that is being proposed in the budget, similar to a COLA. It is a, you know, an inflation variable that we're looking to. You know, you mentioned we're in the same market position we were four years ago today.
I find that very hard to believe, and I'm letting you know. I don't think that we're, because that would make us in five years 90% beyond the market. And when you look at scales of economies, San Antonio is probably 70 times larger than Live Oak. Their city manager isn't making 70 times more, he's making probably two and a half to three times more, maybe four. But the economies of scale don't hold water, the logic isn't sound, in my opinion. But backing up, I'm sorry, continue.
No, ma'am, I was just going to say, again, the staff is recommending going forward, including the ECI in the five-year budget forecast in an effort to maintain our market position so that we don't find ourselves lagging behind again. So that's what James was mentioning with the 1%.
I've got that. And as far as the CC, the class comp study, and research and marketing, and research in particular, the size fish that you catch, the size net that you use determines what fish you're going to catch, that's just a thing. And statistics can be just, you know, you can use them to say anything. I'm not saying that didn't have some credence. Mr. Kellman and I had spoken, I think it did have some merit, I want to say that, I really believe that. My, I like the holistic approach, throwing my hat in the ring for that one. Don't want to put a Band-Aid on a broken arm. I don't want to do anything else this year, personally, Rosemary. I'm good with that for right now, let the dust settle and come back. I do want to see it addressed. I'm apprehensive, if we do this, then the other departments are going to be saying, well, what about us? And then we're going to look like, oh my God, then we got to fix that, then we got to fix this. I like, sorry, I like the holistic approach. I have two more questions, or one's an issue, they're both issues, okay? Two more things to say. Number one, it's already in the budget. We put it in the budget. That's just like, I don't think that that's a sound argument. I know that what you're trying to do is noble, I know you're trying not to add more to us and saying, we can take care of all of our children because we have this right now. But this is part of that over $2 million that we did. I don't, you know, it's already there, that's not a, to me, that's a superfluous point. But I think your intention was noble, for the record, Dr. Brown, I want you to know that, okay? Number two, I don't think we should revisit the CC in three years. I think it needs to be further out. I think five years is close together. But when you look at, before the pandemic, before, you know, all these millions of people looking for jobs and lining up, and that's part of the growth because they're bailing on the other states that have an income tax, and there are jobs here, and they're just pouring in. And we have to bear that with the growth and all of that. The citizens are already there, pay for the growth. I don't think we needed, I don't know if it's 45 or 49 new employees this year. I mean, it was super, super best-of-all-possible-world scenario. I would recommend putting that on hold. I'm not saying y'all should never have raises, I certainly believe that. I'm a big proponent of merit raises when and if appropriate, but I think we have to do it holistically. And I was really upset after I felt personally hurt and wounded. Whenever I did vote to pass the budget, I was never a fan of the CC study. I never was, but you know what? I want to do what's best for our people, and I'm never going to defund y'all, I want you to know. I think y'all are worthy, not saying there's not problems, please don't misconstrue. However, I thought it was an insult whenever I wanted, I thought we'd get an attaboy. And it's like, man, I just felt like, it was very demoralizing to me personally. But anyway, because we do try. I think council really tries to do a good job for y'all. That's, that is all, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to respond.
Yes, yes.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, and y'all certainly don't have to do this. But a lot of what you said, we knew six months ago before we launched into this effort. And yet council wanted us to work the compression issue. So we've been working it for six months. And the things you said about class and comp and budget, in my opinion, were known then. So, you know, I don't want to feel like we've done six months of work for nothing. And that's sort of what we're, that's sort of what I think we're saying here.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Brown, for your comments. Mayor Paul Tannen Whitaker.
Yes, hi. So I'm the new person, and I wasn't here for the whole discussion. So I just wanted, I'm learning as I'm listening to other comments as well. But first question would be, if we don't implement this particular adjustment, what does that look like for the employees and their pay? So what happens going forward?
If we don't adopt this, or if you don't move to approve this, then we would stay with the current class and comp implementation plan that was set forth and approved by council, that's my understanding. So, I mean, we would move forward with what was originally proposed after the class and comp study was approved and implemented.
Okay, and that includes, like, will they, basically, will they see a pay raise at that point? Or is it?
Many of them will, some won't, again, just depending on where they are in the pay band today and where their position fell out, or not fell out, but came out in the study and where they kind of landed. But yes, many of them would see increases with class and comp adjustments.
Okay, so there is something on the books that says we are going to make an adjustment. So we are going to address the compression issue. This proposal is to address it further, to bring it a little bit more in line with where we think it should be.
Well, adjustments with the class and comp study are not designed to address the compression issue. And in fact, in some cases, they actually exacerbate the issue, frankly. With the class and comp, we made a commitment to maintain the depth penetration. So if an employee enjoyed a position at 50% in their pay band, if they were placed into a new pay band, they were placed at the 50th percentile. And so, again, in many cases where we have that relationship between the supervisor and subordinate that existed before class and comp, it's still going to exist after class and comp, not going to be addressed effectively with the class and comp adjustments, which is why we looked specifically at a different type of pay structure that would effectively address the compression issue.
Okay, so the, I don't hear about this. So the goal in this, implementing this, what is it that we're trying to accomplish?
Sure, no, my pleasure to answer. We are trying to accomplish, again, some of the challenges that we face when we have those compression issues. So again, when you have supervisors making less than their direct reports, we are seeing morale issues, we see a lack of desire to promote. It really creates issues. And Councilwoman Scott, if I may just say, you know, whenever we started this project, we did look at non-public safety departments to see if compression existed in other areas. We did want to be equitable in terms of looking, identifying the issue, and addressing it. We didn't find it in non-public safety departments like we do in public safety. And that's really because of the rank structure that we see in those departments creates these issues. So the purpose or the goal of this would be to address and to correct those issues. We do that by narrowing the bands so that you don't have the overlap, or the overlap is small. And again, we're looking to encourage promotion.
Okay, so this, this plan, new plan costs us more money, so we're shrinking the bands. And so where is that money going specifically to, I'm sorry if it's, I don't know if you can simplify it, but if it costs us this much money, $363,000 to implement this plan, somewhere there's some, there's more money going into it. So to me, it sounds like, on a very simplified level, this means people are getting paid more money, is that?
Some are being paid more than, say, what they would be paid if we moved forward with class and comp, and some are being paid less. And the tenants of the model really drive where the employees will fall into this model. With some employees, they actually see, let's say, increased salaries with this model, and some actually see decreased salaries versus what they would see with class and comp.
But there, but no one's going to see an actual drop, but just
No, ma'am.
in relationship to the
Right.
Okay. I will admit, it is a lot to absorb. So all of that, I'm not sure I have it all put together, but the comments have been made earlier about, you know, when do we look at it? So in three years that we would look at it again. It sounds like there's still a lot of confusion, and my suggestion is just that we obviously still need to keep discussing it. Councilmember Davis mentioned bringing it as a whole discussion. I think it does sound like there's so many pieces of the puzzle. I don't know if that's feasible to have a meeting or multiple meetings where we look at the entire puzzle. But I know that that's what you guys do every day. So for you to be experts at this and then trying to convey that to us in a way that we completely comprehend it is obviously a huge challenge. But I would like to understand, I would like to understand the whole puzzle. But I think whatever we do tonight, I would say we want to keep talking about it. And I do get a little nervous saying, if we say yes to this, okay, nothing happens in three years. Well, what if this ended up being a disaster? So not that we would need an entire new study, but just to keep the conversation going.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, and Dr. Brown got ahead of me a little bit, because I was going to bring that up. This started last summer, when the whole compression was discussed separately at the budget meetings. And we said, hey, we need to address this separately from the rest of the employees. Because it's, it was in fact, and is in fact, a separate issue. Staff has been working on this, and in November, they came out with the original kind of plan for this, the framework. This wasn't a secret, right? We've all gotten all of the briefs, we've gotten all of the information every week. It wasn't, and then over the last, I don't know, six or eight weeks, they kind of put it all together. And I realize that the, you know, the police, fire, EMS folks, it's not perfect for them, I realize that, okay? But at the same time, class and comp study, we can have another one until we find the answers that we like. In the meantime, we have a true compression issue with our public safety people that we need to address separately from all of the other employees, all right? This wasn't 100% supported by them, I realize that, but it's something of a compromise, if you will, all right? And again, we've been involved in this. I just feel like we've had time to ask questions, we've been presented with a lot of options over the last six months. This isn't a surprise tonight. If it is, I'm sorry, I wasn't surprised. I was, when I read this the other day, I said, okay, that looks like where we've, you know, we've pretty much been going the last six months, the last three months, especially the last six, eight weeks, finalizing all of this, because it's not been easy, all right? And as Councilwoman Whitaker said, nobody's going to take home less money, all right? It's not, it's not there to penalize anybody, but it's trying to make the future a little bit easier to budget, a little bit easier from a command and control standpoint, a little bit easier for, you know, management and leadership to work the future, to hire people properly so they know what their career path, you know, may look like. And these numbers, obviously, it's like everything else. You know, inflation, deflation, whatever happens in the future, we're going to, we're going to adjust. I just feel like arguing it tonight is a little, little late in the game. And I'm, I'm very positive about going forward with it as, after all the work that the staff has put into it, that's all I got to say.
Councilmember Hayward.
Yeah, as far as this, it is not perfect. But we know that we've had compression issues in public safety for years. I know they've tried to address it for years, and some people wouldn't recognize that it needed to be addressed. And now that we're here, we've come to a point where we said, hey, we need to address it. In my research, I found out that a lot of cities go with a public safety pay scale and a regular pay scale because of the different rank and structure in what they do and how they do things. It makes sense. It also stops some of the compression issues that's been there. And as far as, I have to concur with Councilmember Brown, that this is something we've asked for. This is something that's been coming. We had a briefing, a staff briefing on this whole compensation thing. I don't know how many attend their meeting, I don't know, and how many ask questions, I have no idea, ask questions. As much as I would love to give them, and knowing that everything is not perfect, I would love to give everyone everything they've asked for, but it's not in the budget. I would prefer to go with the first one, and then we readdress it in three years, because in three years, we may see Because in three years, we may see, okay, where we need to go. But at least it gets us a start. And we got to start somewhere. We always keep saying we got to start somewhere for different things. This is the start. This is the start to fix a problem that's been around for decades. And we need to just, we, we, we can keep doing this analysis paralysis forever before we get something fixed. And it's time to act. They've done a lot of work on this. The staff has come back. I know that the departments don't all agree. But it gets us a start somewhere, and then we can try and address things later. So, I'm all for this. And I wasn't hit with a brick or side-swiped with this information. It's been on, forthcoming, and we did ask for it in the last budget meeting. That is all.
Councilmember Dalla?
Yeah, just, we asked staff to do this last year. Staff has done what we've asked them to do and addressed with a longstanding issue. I agree with Councilmember Davis in a lot of respects that there are some serious concerns that we've raised about the previous class and comp study and the results that we've gotten from it. And hopefully, the next one that we're planning to do in three years, we can address some of those concerns and make sure we get a better result, a better product from whoever we have doing this. But the compression issue is an issue that's there for all the reasons that have been previously stated. We've asked staff to address it. And for me, it's, right now, it's more of a question, do we want to give staff direction to implement it immediately? Or do we want to wait till the next fiscal year starts? You know, we have a whole host of pay issues that we need to address. You know, the merit, the longevity, you know, all that sort of stuff. And, you know, I think it's virtually impossible to address it all in one fell swoop. And, you know, it's, it's like, you know, my friend's dad always said, you know, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And I think this is a good first bite at trying to resolve one of a number of concerns that we have about how we compensate our employees, both fairly for the time and effort that they're putting in, for, you know, the public safety people, for the risks they take, and to make sure that they feel that they're wanted and that they're appreciated and that we're competitive with the other cities around here. So, we don't become a training ground for other communities for some of the other departments that we have on the public work side, like we discussed during our retreat with the other employees that are making well below what they can make in other communities. And they come here and they train for six months, and they get their certification or whatever they need, and then they jump ship and go somewhere else because we're not competitive there. So, there's a whole host of issues to address. And I don't see us getting it all at one point. And, you know, I would say that, you know, this was a good presentation. A lot of effort went into this. I think it's a good result. It addresses a number of the concerns on the compression issue. It doesn't solve all of it. But again, it's one bite at a time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Skagliola?
Yeah, I don't usually get an opportunity to speak last. All the good ideas have already been said, but, okay. Hey, here's the thing. Dr. Brown is absolutely right. The city council says, hey, we need to fix this compression issue. And there is definitely a problem with the pay scale of the first responders. Hey, let's do something about it. So, it's been going on for at least six months. And Charles, I'm an analyst. I'm really amazed with how many things you managed to juggle simultaneously. You can't fit a square peg into a round hole. In some cases, you were required to. You got to whittle it down just a little bit, and that's understandable. Now, the pay structure of our first responders is different, and for valid reasons. Let's address those needs. And I think that's what happened. This plan was vetted by, I don't know if you'd call it an oversight committee or a development committee, but it was made up from individuals from the different departments. And no, not 100%. I don't know if you could ever get 100%, but it was well over 90%. And even the, even the entities that were not 100% in favor were pretty much in favor of most of it. No employee will lose money. They may lose the potential for future gains, but that's correctable. It's called promotion. It encourages promotion. One promotion will fix any potential loss of future earnings. One promotion throughout a 20-year career. The revised merit, I've always been a proponent of revising that merit pay program. And it helps to address the compression issue. I don't know if it does 100%, but at least temporarily, it gives us an opportunity to come up with a better plan. So, I think the next step, after we approve this, would be to see how we could adopt some of the lessons learned to our entire city payroll strategy. This is a good place to start. And as I said, I'm an analyst. Y'all have dotted the i's and crossed the t's, and we could kick the can around the room till the cows come home. I don't know that it would change a whole lot because it's a solid effort, from what I can see. So, I don't know. Mayor, ready to make a motion?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, you have additional comments?
All right. I just wanted to chime back in and make sure I clarify. I really, I agree with Councilwoman Dalla, and I think that was well spoken, that as I was, so many things that we're looking at here, and it does get overwhelming. And it occurred to me that if we can address this one issue as we go forward and talk about the merit program and incentive pay and things like that, it's much easier to discuss those things when this is fixed and figured out, and then we have fewer variables to work with. Because if we move forward in a big picture, it's like, well, do we do this? And then we do this? And then, and we've just got one extra variable in the picture. So, I do agree, as much as, you know, I have gathered in my time on council, that, you know, the staff has done an amazing job. And I'm impressed with everybody so far. This is, you know, a great group to work with. And I know that they've worked their butts off to get to this point. And there's no way I can look through this and figure it out any better. I'm just trying to understand it so that I do have a better grasp on the entire thing. But I really like what Councilwoman Dalla said. I think that that's an excellent point, that I would agree that we address this, move this forward. And we've got other things to talk about, and we talk about them. But with this set, it'll help us have fewer things to juggle.
All right. Councilmember Scott?
Nobody was blindsided. I didn't mean to suggest that anybody was. We have talked about it. I have read every inch of it. And I want that on the record. I saw it coming. It's okay. When I was expressing my shock and dismay was about last year. It wasn't about the past month or two or three. Okay? That's, I want that on the record, too. When I first saw this, and my background is not government. Teaching is my second career. My background is corporate America. And the market bears what it will bear. And if it's not good, it goes away. It corrects itself. So, this is kind of a new learning process for me. Okay? Whenever I first saw subordinates making more than their supervisors, what I saw is we're rewarding longevity. That's fantastic. I'm glad people are staying long enough to make more than their supervisors. In the corporate world, many salespeople make more than their managers because they're the ones out there shaking the trees and making some, something happen. With all of this being said, I do like the idea of promotion from within. And if what Councilman Skagliola said is indeed true, he has much more government experience than me. Everyone on this council probably does for that matter. I don't have the government background. But if what he said was true, how this could fix, one promotion can fix all the problems in the future, or, you know, 90% of them or what have you, I'm all on board with that. That's fine. I just don't want to be, I want to respect the people paying for that, our constituents. And I don't want to just be on a spending frenzy ever. And I know y'all put a lot of work into it, and I thought you did a good job. So, I want that on the record, too. That's the end.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Fire Department, Police Department, the EMS, this is not, you provide a service, and everyone here, all the council members, appreciate that. This is a question of budget. That's what it comes down to. The money, whether or not the funds are available to fix this compression issue. Dr. Brown and Charles, thank you for the time putting the package together. It actually will fix some of the issues. It won't fix all of them. And with that, is there, when is, my question is, when is the staff scheduled for a pay increase? When is that outside of this compression issue? When is that scheduled?
So, we just started the 2020 evaluation process. And so, merit will be forthcoming. Usually, merit payout is effective mid to late April. So, that potentially would be the next increase that staff would see. We also have a scheduled class and comp year two adjustment scheduled for October 2021, again, which is in the budget.
Would, by delaying this one or two months, would that cause any, any further compression? Or?
No, sir.
No?
It doesn't, it doesn't make any-
It just maintains what we currently have. Okay? So, the only thing that would, the value will be less than, because we're delaying it one or two months, is basically it. So, you know, every, like I said, all council appreciates the services that are being provided. And I'm sure our residents do, too. They're very grateful for, for everything that you provide. Safety is the most important thing that our community, you know, that's why they moved to Shirts, is the safety. And it's provided by EMS, the Fire Department, and our Police Department. It's a very, very priceless item that we have, is the services and dedications that you all provide. With that, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 21R05?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Hayward, second by Councilmember Skagliola. Council, any other comments, questions? Yes, just a minute. Well, no. Councilmember Davis, you have a question?
I just want to make sure that it's noted for the record that, again, I appreciate all the work the staff has put on this. And I understand it's been six months, and I know we've had discussions. But to me, working on class and comp and the right kind of compensation for our staff isn't a, isn't a time measure. It's not that we get it done in three months or six months, or it's going to get done right for me. And as we've had these talks, I just want to make sure that it's known for the record that as we've had these talks, over that six months, we've gotten various proposals. And what we're looking at tonight is just one proposal that, that ultimately, we're asked to decide on. In our package tonight, even with what we've talked out now, the package says, department support for the proposed model is outlined below. Shirts Police Association do not support the models proposed. They have outstanding reservations regarding potential earning and employees maxing out. Shirts Fire Association, Shirts Fire Non-Association EMS agrees it's a step in the right direction and supports the models proposed with the understanding that there is still a need for further evaluation and discussion on this issue. I mean, that's, that's ultimately my point. Are we just putting a Band-Aid on this? Are we going to come back and talk about it again? If, if, if that's the case, then that's the case. Me, I'd rather get everybody on the same page and make sure that we're getting this fixed once and for all. But it appears as though, even though we've got a recommendation here from the staff, that there's still outstanding concern regarding compensation. I have a feeling it's just something we're going to just keep on talking about.
Thanks.
Councilmember Scott?
Is it once and for all? Is there such a thing as once and for all?
If I may just say, could, you know, it says revisit class and comp in three years. The study's compensation philosophy does say that we're going to revisit every three to five years. So, it may not be three years. It may be four. And, you know, we completed the study in 2020, so likely, we would begin efforts maybe in 2024, hoping to complete the study in 2025. Just wanted to clarify that also.
Was this the one that was, that was already, of the three that we were discussing, this was the first step in those gradations? Thank you for clarifying. That will influence my decision.
Yes, ma'am. It was the initial proposal.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, any other comments? Right. Now, we have a motion made by Councilmember Hayward to approve Resolution Number 21R05, second by Councilmember Skagliola. Any other comments? None. Let's call for the vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. We have seven ayes, no objection. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Roll call vote confirmation. Our City Secretary, Brenda Dennis, will provide the roll call confirmation for consent agenda items one, two, and three, and discussion items number four and five. Ms. Dennis, you have the floor.
Yes, Council. Consent agenda items one through three. Motion was made by Councilmember Hayward, seconded by Councilmember Scott. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. No one voted no. Motion passed. Item number four, Resolution 21R02. Motion was made by Councilmember Scott, and I thought the second was made by Councilmember Dalla. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. No one voted no. Motion passed. Item number five, Resolution Number 21R05. Motion was made by Councilmember Hayward, seconded by Councilmember Skagliola. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. No one voted no. Motion passed. Item number five, Resolution Number 21R05. Motion was made by Councilmember Hayward, seconded by Councilmember Skagliola. Mayor Pro Tim Whitaker, Councilmembers Davis, Scott, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, and Brown voted yes. No one voted no. Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. All right. We'll continue with a workshop discussion and update regarding the COVID-19 virus in our current ordinance, Number 20H18, Declaration of Local Disaster. Ms. Hall, you have the floor.
Good evening, Summer Hall, Emergency Management Coordinator, bringing you this evening's numbers. So, this week, we will, just to start off with our vaccination update, we did receive our second dose of the Pfizer vaccines that we gave out the week of January 21st and 22nd. We did receive the second doses for those vaccines. So, we will be conducting that clinic later on this week. We did receive an additional first-dose allocation of 200 Moderna doses as well. The EOC activities are numbers this week. So, there's a really good trend of downward numbers in all areas. So, we're looking, we're glad to see that. That was happening last week, and it continues to downward trend as far as our active cases and hospitalizations, all of those things. So, in Guadalupe County, we're at 712 active cases. The City of Shirts is 109 active cases. Fair County, 25,181, and Comal County, 588. So, the numbers are still a little high, but they are continuing to trend downward, which is nice to see. So, again, beyond our area, you can also see with Travis County is at 4,077, Dallas County is at 27,384, and then the Houston area is 39,857. But again, all of those areas continue to trend downward. So, that's a positive thing as well. Guadalupe County and Comal County, just to zoom in a little bit, with the 712 cases for Guadalupe County, Comal County at 588. The school district saw a significant decrease in their numbers this week. So, they are down at just 30. at just 36 cases today, 26 students and 10 staff members, so that was excellent. I mean, they were up to 90 two weeks ago, so that was really good to see that, that trend as well. The testing positivity rate at the state level for the molecular test is at 11% this week and 5% for those antigen tests. Again, huge, this is going down. In Bear County, it's under 10% for the first time in a while, so really good to see that trend downward overall. The Governor Abbott extended the state disaster declaration, so as, as we have been for a while, we will follow suit with additional 30 days. So, that was extended on February 4th. Today, we have, in the state, we have 10,378 new cases, but you can see as that continues to trend downward. So, as with everything, we're continuing to see a downward trend. This is probably the most exciting. So, today's the first day in a while that we've gotten under that 15% of our people in the hospital, those hospital beds that are being utilized, under 15% of those are COVID patients, so that's huge. This is the first day, remember, we have to be seven consecutive days below 15%. So, this is the first day we got below 15%, so we'll continue to watch that and hope that, you know, in the, in the coming weeks, we'll be able to increase our capacity again for our places as we stay under 15%. So, you can see around the state, last week, we had, you know, several, just a couple of green, some yellow, but still a lot of red. You can see just generally around the state that those are all starting to improve everywhere. So, that's so encouraging to see as we get away from the holiday period and we see more vaccinations being implemented around the state. And then this is the first time I've been able to make our trauma service area P back in the yellow, not a, a big bright red. So, again, we'll be watching that and hope that it stays for that seven consecutive days. So, hospitalizations, you can see we've had a huge drop in the number of COVID positive patients in our hospital system here in the trauma service P area. Not a significant drop to coincide with this number of patients, but we are seeing still that downward trend in patients needing ICU care and those requiring ventilation. So, again, just a general downward trend in all areas, which is excellent news for us, so. Take, any questions?
All right, council, any questions? Yes, Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, do you know if SEUCIS are doing the COVID testing on campus?
I, I do not know if they are doing COVID testing, have, if they are doing COVID testing.
That is, okay, yeah, they're doing it at my school and so I was wondering if they did it, because if they're doing it and those numbers go down, that is fantastic, because sometimes numbers go down just because people aren't getting tested.
Right.
But most teachers and the students certainly are on board with it, so that's awesome. Good, I'm so glad, I am so glad. I hope we get over this very soon.
Yeah, absolutely. It's encouraging to see a lot of the different numbers going down.
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Dalla?
Our numbers are going down for, because of the involvement of many, many people locally, state and across the nation, I just want to say thank you to everybody that's involved with, with helping with the call center, the volunteers, the shot clinics and everything else. Everybody, thank you for your efforts.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro temp Whitaker?
I just wanted to say, I think you were out of the room last week when I mentioned, because I did help with the call center last week, but since then, helping out with the, one of the clinics just one day, but we got a lot of feedback and I'm sure you're hearing the same thing, but I just wanted to say it out loud, that people are so impressed with the ease of coming in, getting a shot and, you know, I've kind of floated around and saw all the different areas. People are really moving, there's very little lines that are occurring. I think honestly, they're occurring when people get anxious and come early and not at their appointment time, but for the most part, people are really just moving through. It's very simple process and someone even said, you should videotape this and, you know, distribute it so that everybody knows, you know, how a smooth running operation could go. So, I think, you know, people are taking note of that. I think you've done a great job, you know. I told someone, I'm, you know, for our very first pandemic, it's been quite a success. So, I think I just wanted to let you know that it's been noted that you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. And, and as, as say, the last few weeks, I can't, I can't thank you guys enough for your involvement, support, the staff as a whole. I mean, this isn't a fire or an EMS police endeavor, this is a citywide effort and it, I mean, there are people popping out from all over the place and, and the volunteers that are coming out from our community. I mean, we just, we couldn't make it happen without them and I'm so appreciative of that because it can be a great plan, but if there's not people to implement it, it goes nowhere. So, thank you so much for everyone's support too.
Councilmember Hayward?
Also, just out loud, on Saturday, when I was there, working with the vaccine, a lady brought her book because she thought it was going to take a long time to get her second dose. When we got her through the door, she was like, oh, I didn't eat my book after all. And so, she was, got right on through and so everyone that did come through, they were, keep saying the same thing, they're amazed at how you guys are getting people through and not having to, the long wait and just letting people know, hey, 15 minutes before your appointment time, we get you checked in and out the process. And it's been going so smoothly that people are just amazed. I've had several people that have said their spouse went somewhere else and they came here and it was night and day. So, kudos to everybody that's pulling this off and the way, you know, making the little adjustments. For some people, for you guys, it's massive, for most people, they don't even know the massive, the adjustments and it's going fantastic, so I appreciate it.
I think my favorite compliment was one, some of the folks that have stayed inside for over a year or close to a year at this point and for them to come into our facility and feel comfortable being in that environment around other people, I think that was probably one of the most heartwarming compliments is that they felt safe. And to be able to provide that in a place where there's a lot of people, I think is just a true testament to what we've been able to accomplish as a community here, so.
Yeah, I, I just want to go ahead and reiterate what everyone is saying is that every, all our staff, not only our police, Fire Department, EMS, we had staff working, we have volunteers, we appreciate all that, but a special thanks to you in chief. I mean, there's a lot of work that does, that goes on pre-clinic and post-clinic that, that we just don't see on the back end. A lot of work and I, I can't say how much I appreciate everything you have done and I appreciate it very much. Thank you, guys.
The administrative, the administrative work that they have to do is unbelievable.
Exactly.
They have to work on the weekends.
Yeah, the boxes came in today and they were just.
Summer and Cade run, run the whole show, but Mayor, I really want to thank you personally
for really leading the volunteer effort because I tell you, if it wasn't for Mayor Gutierrez, we would not have the volunteers that we have. So, I think you are outshining all your peers.
Well, thank you.
And I think you're, you're just doing a fantastic job and Jill and Allison, thank you both for serving and helping us. It's deeply, deeply appreciated.
Well, thank you and like I said before, it, you know, our priority has to be the vaccine and saving lives. So, thank you, thanks again. Thank you for your words. All right, no other comments? All right, we'll move on. Requesting announcements, Dr. Brown, any further announcements?
I just want to thank Charles and Jessica for the hard work they did on the, they've been at it for six months. I can't tell you how many different iterations of refining and making, making the model sing, so to speak. I think they, they just, they just stuck with it and did a fantastic job. When I, when I talk to them, after about five minutes, you know, they sort of leave me in the dust with the technical stuff because it's, you know, it's so deep, but we were really fortunate to have those two who deeply understand this, this program at a very significant level.
Yes, thank you. Yes, that's quite right, that's a lot of work. All right, council, any updates or informations, information package you are requesting from staff? Yes, Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I'd like to see something on the parks. I know that I asked several months ago and I don't know if it's at a workshop coming up or not or what, but I want to hit that again.
Yes, I think we have a workshop scheduled for March, sometime in March.
So, we, we do have several workshops coming up and we, we pushed them back a little bit because of the rising cases, but now that seems to be passing, so I think we'll, we'll put them back on the schedule here pretty soon.
Okay, if the workshops are during working hours, I can't go there except for the budget, I'm taking off for the budget?
No, no, it's a, it's a council meeting.
Oh, here.
Yes, it's a joint session with Parks.
Perfect, thank you, sorry, misunderstood.
No, no.
Perfect, thank you. Got it.
Yes, Councilmember Dalla?
Yeah, I know we're doing the joint meeting with the Parks. We also have a joint meeting with Planning and Zoning scheduled as well? Okay.
Yeah, I think the parks is scheduled in March and Planning and Zoning, we're looking at April for joint session, somewhere around that area? Yes. All right, so we got those two items taken care of. Council, any possible items you'd like to place on the future agenda? None, okay. Announcements by council members or events that you attended? Mayor Pro temp Whitaker?
Just that I did attend one day of the COVID-19 clinic last week and as I said, it went really well. And then also a ribbon cutting at Authentic Cuts on Main Street. It was extremely unfortunate, several businesses were vandalized that very morning and that happened to be one of them. So, but they did a great job and with the help of Ms. Dennis here and they got it all cleaned up and the chamber was amazing. They put together a little impromptu curtain, so I actually thought it was just extra ventilation by the time I got there, so I didn't really notice. But they got the glasses back up and they are open for business, as I understand. So, Authentic Cuts on Main Street welcomed them into our community officially.
Yeah, the, the Police Department got the suspect too.
Yes.
They captured him right away.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Nothing, sir.
Councilmember Scott?
I went to the Animal Advisory Board, thank you, Councilwoman Hayward, for sacrificing that for me. I loved it. Boy, they do such a fantastic job. It was, it just warmed the cockles of my heart. It made my whole week, so thank you. And thanks Shirts, y'all do, man, the people running that, it was amazing. I think it's the model, so anyway, I was happy, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dalla?
Just the retreat last week, a lot of great conversations, appreciate the time and effort of staff to put together all the information, some good discussions that obviously we're going to continue for probably the rest of the year, if not longer. And really, one other remarkable takeaway from that is that I think Brian has a second career lined up as a professional bowler for, for his time after he's done working this, working for us. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Scagliola?
Yeah, the retreat was wonderful. Thank you so much for putting that on. The budget talks were good and the talks on development were really good. Discussion on policies, revision of policies, that was really interesting. I just don't know what can be done or, or what should be done in order to advise our residents and the community about what, what all actions are being taking place policy-wise. I'll lead up, leave it up to staff to brainstorm because I, I think it's a story that needs to be told. That's all I have, sir.
Hey, Councilmember Hayward?
Yes, I worked the vaccine clinic on Thursday all day and then I went in Saturday morning and worked it until it was over. And again, it just goes so smoothly and I can truly say that when I'm there, everyone knows, has learned now that Dr. Pepper's my favorite drink, I start to look a little on the weary side and I get offered a Dr. Pepper, so that's kind of cool and amazing. The council retreat, great conversation coming out of that. I did attend the ribbon cutting at Authentic Cuts and they did pull it off and the chamber decided to make a spinoff for the situation that happened with the window being broken to probably drum up business. And they're just a lovely couple that's trying to do their small business and they also offer military discounts for anyone that would like to go with Authentic Cuts on Main Street. I also attended my Guadalupe County Community Coalition Zoom meeting and part of that in the discussion today was talking about THC and, and marijuana and that the marijuana now has 100 times more THC concentrate in it than back in the 80s and 90s. So, it's actually pretty detrimental for people that are, are starting the process and they're finding that the gummies that people are eating with THC tend to be more dangerous because it takes a little bit of time to get in the system. So, instead of eating one and you're not feeling it, you eat like three, four, five and then it, it makes you sick. And just looking at things and trying to look at policies and procedures that are coming up and there's some bills apparently that's going to be in the Texas Legislature on different things and so as those come forward, I'll brief everyone on what it is and what we may have to look for and that is all.
Okay, Councilmember Brown?
Once again, thank you, Dr. Brown and the rest of the staff for the retreat, great conversations and I know we'll have a lot of positive outcomes over the, over the next year or two on that, so again, thanks, that's all I have.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to say yes, thank you for, for the information that provided on the retreat, Dr. Brown and staff, very informative, you know, and with that, it is now 7:38, we stand adjourned.